At the moment, I'm missing my vice chair. Let's see. Do you want us to take it over to the show?
Sure. So, let's see, it being 7 o'clock, is there any old and new business needs to be discussed?
No, we're ready to correct, no old, new business on this.
Okay. All right, in that case, it being 7 o'clock, we're hearing the continued petition of Abington Investments LLC, 245 Central Street, Abington, for a comprehensive permit under MGLC Chapter 40B for relief from the following: 175-21A and J uses, 175-29 dimensional and density regulations, 175-43A, 175-432A, 175-50B and C, 175-52G, parking and load requirements, 175-31, 175-32ABCDE, multifamily use, 175-34, earth removal, 175-37, transit-oriented development, 175-66, buffer strip, 175-67.1, outdoor lighting for 144 rental units known as Abington Senior Housing at 1015 Plymouth Street.
Okay, I'm sorry, finish.
The property is located on Assessors Map 17 and 18 lots 23 and 6 in the R30 zone.
I apologize, I'm just going to shut this door here, leave that door open because we have voting going on. Okay, just a few things before we start. From the SOAR Department, 1015 Plymouth Street, this proposal located Assessors Map 17, 18 lot 23 and 6 must be approved by the Board of Storage Commission at a regularly scheduled meeting. Also, we have an email from Chief Nuttall who says, "Due to the changes, the Fire Department has no major concerns regarding the proposal site plan at this time." Okay, and one more thing, from the Planning Board. And would you like to read the Planning Boards?
Sure.
You got it?
Yes. The Planning would like to thank you for the opportunity to comment on a comprehensive permit project at 1015 Plymouth Street before your Board. The Planning Board discussed the project at their meeting on October 1st, 2018. They would like to offer the following comments. "The Board is concerned about the number of waivers that have been requested in the hopes that zoning board with Town Council will be sure to have the project completed with the best interests of the residents in town. The Board hopes that the zoning board of appeals can have the applicant provide the funds for the town to have audit oversight on the project, ensuring that funds are spent appropriately on the project. And the Board would also suggest that the zoning board of appeals asks that the affordable units be made affordable for 99 years. Thank you again, if you'd like any assistance or further comment, please contact the Planning Office."
And again, we ask for other departments to acknowledge the project and any type of suggestions that they have. You did a good job, you spelt my name wrong, not too bad though, it was an E this time, not an I. Okay, not bad. All right, so that's all we've got here.
Amy? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would suggest that we turn it over to Tetra Tech, who is the peer reviewer that was hired by this Board that did an overview of the application thus far.
Okay. Everyone agree?
Yep.
Board agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Sean Riordan with Tetra Tech. I've been asked by the Board to review all the civil and traffic and wetlands components of the project to try to assist you guys in your review. Do you have a plan or anything like that? Just because some of the things I'm going to do is probably to speak to the plans, if we can just put it up. So, we've done quite a few ZBA reviews for 40Bs, runs the gamut. What we try to do is take our lead from you. You know, as you guys know, the broad discretion on how much detail you can ask for and kind of how detailed you want to get. What we try to do is review the information from the applicant. We very much see it as their responsibility to provide all the information, and we react to it. We say where it's maybe missing things, maybe it may be a little bit misleading or otherwise may need to be addressed. So what we've done is we've tried to review all the documents that are on file. They're documents that were provided to us by the applicant's attorney. And go through all those things and try to bring our engineering insight, our experience to help kind of identify issues that are more, at this point, fundamental. So we're not going to get into the real nitty-gritty of the engineering because really there has to be some agreement as to kind of the scope and scale of the project. So really what we do is focus our attention on the bigger issues that may inform the overall sighting of the project, may cause fundamental shifts in how it's presented. And then as those things work themselves out, we can certainly go back and do a more fine review to kind of attach the details. I think one thing that's important to know here for this is that because there's so many wetlands on site, they're going to have to go through review with the Conservation Commission. And they have really broad discretion and very specific performance standards that they have to meet. So you can rest assured that as far as stormwater is concerned or wetlands are concerned, there will necessarily be another step with the Conservation Commission where they will review the project in for compliance with the stormwater standards and the Wetlands Protection Act standards that are required by Mass DEP. So in our standpoint, from our standpoint, there is another layer of view for stormwater and for other things that will kind of handle the details, but we're going to provide comments on stormwater to the extent that it may impact the scope and scale of the project. So with that, we issued a comment letter yesterday to the Board, had about 50 or 60 comments. Some are kind of, I'd say, you know, a little focused, but what we want to do is we want to get them on record to make sure that they get addressed. And some of them are more major. What I'd like to do is just go section by section and kind of hit on the big points. So the first thing we'd like to do is just talk about the plan in general. Our primary concern, at least initially, is the size of the roadway as it's shown coming in. Right now, the road is, I think, drawn at about 24 feet or 22 feet with a four-foot sidewalk. And it goes through a very narrow upland section between wetlands. It indicates that there's a guardrail there, but it doesn't really give any space for it to mount the guardrail. So traditionally, what we see here is a little bit more robust roadway width so that you'd have room to put a guardrail in, or it's going to have to be some sort of structural solution that the guardrails mounted to it, which is pretty atypical. So what we wanted to do is just make sure that we got that clarified because there wasn't really a typical cross-section of the roadway provided in the plans, or at least that we saw. It would be really helpful to understand how that section is constructed and how they plan to accomplish that wall. The wall is going to be in some spots as much as six feet tall, so it's not just like a little, like, one-foot, two-foot wall. In some places, it's pretty tall and it runs for considerable width. Next thing is, they have two stormwater basins, so what's going to have to happen is for all the new impervious area that they create, they're going to have to create what we call best management practices, or BMPs, to detain stormwater and re-infiltrate it so that they match pre-development runoff conditions. They have two basins on either side of the roadway, and they don't have any test pit information which shows how far groundwater is. And from our review of it and how close it is to the wetlands, we question whether or not they're going to have enough separation from groundwater. The reason why we tag that as an issue is because that's going to be a big challenge for them to try to figure out how to get the water off that road, get it treated before discharging to the wetland, given the fact that the whole access road, or I'd say at least 80% of it, runs along the wetlands. One other general question we had, or comment we had, was really not a whole lot of landscape area on the developed site. The site's big, but a lot of it's wetland, so there's really not much they can do in those areas. They've done a really nice job of sort of maximizing the footprint available to them and being considerate of those boundaries. They've only gone into the wetlands where they have to. So right now, it's a pretty well-developed site, but there's not a whole lot of other space, not a whole lot of landscape area to sort of offset the density and offset the parking. And that plays into another concern we had, is a lot of pavement, but nowhere to store snow. One of the challenges they're going to have is the snow can't go in the wetland. So all that snow that comes off the access road, another reason why we'd like to see a little bit wider berth, is right now, if you plow that snow, it's going to go right off into the wetland. So they're going to have to come up with some other creative way to get rid of that or, you know, run the risk of being kind of found to be in non-compliance with the regulations. Then, one of the other site plan issues or questions we had was, it didn't, and this might be just where we're not as informed as everybody else, is the whole connection to the senior center. They show a connection at the back section of the parcel connecting over to the senior center, which presumably would provide another connection to the roadway network. What they've analyzed in their traffic study is just the Plymouth Street connection. So what we'd like is, if that's a real thing, it fundamentally changes the way traffic is going to move in and out of the site, but would need to be evaluated in the traffic The other part of the plans that we were hoping we could maybe get a little bit of clarity on is, they don't provide existing conditions over the entire site. So they do a pretty good job of giving us existing conditions where the proposed work is going, but we can't really get a sense for how the entire site works. This is a concern for us because one of our stormwater comments is, you know, from our review of available mapping, runoff generally flows kind of in a southwesterly direction across the site. The roadway pretty much bisects the site, so it acts as a dam for everything that's coming down. Now, they do have a 24-inch culvert shown that allows water to go underneath the roadway, but by the way the grading looks, it looks like there's going to be pockets of water impounded against that access drive. And we don't really know how much water's coming. It hasn't been looked at in the drainage report. Doesn't look like they considered the off-site portions of the site that come through there. So there could be a lot of water coming off of Plymouth Street and off of properties further to the north that needs to be accommodated going through that driveway, which, I mean, if you think about it, it's like a causeway going across the wetland. And it's quite a bit higher, it's probably three, four feet higher than existing grad is. So really, an opportunity to impound a lot of water there. As far as stormwater is concerned, probably, again, our critical concern there is, three of the four basins they have, two we think are in groundwater, one is definitely in groundwater. So they actually have really good coverage for test pits on the development parcel, like where the buildings are. And one of their infiltration basins, actually, they have a test pit right next to it. And the bottom of their basin right now is below what they've identified as estimated seasonal high groundwater. So that doesn't comply with standards, and what's going to end up happening is, if they keep it in that location, it's going to have to get raised up, which will change all the grading around it. So that's one of the reasons we say, "Well, we've got to look at that because it could cause a lot of other repercussions in the site." And I think I covered most of the issues on stormwater with the consideration for off-site flows, the creation of the dam, and the need for test pit data. We're tasked also with looking at water, so it's a pretty good-sized development, but nothing was provided to us to review in terms of an assessment of the project's impact on the water system.
Right.
Wouldn't necessarily assume that there's an issue, but it's typical to have a documentation for the Board to consider that, okay, here's what our water generation is, here's what we know about the system, here's why it shouldn't be a problem. We'd review that, see whether it's kind of, it's well-based, and then issue a comment accordingly. It's usually as easy as conducting what's called a fire flow test nearby to determine how much pressure's available and how much would be available if there was a fire. Also, just checking with the neighbors to see if there's any existing issues, checking with the DPW to make sure that there's no problems with the water system. You know, it will draw probably around, my estimate's about 25,000 gallons a day, so that's not, it's not an inconsequential amount of water. Similar, same thing with sewer. You know, they have got a design for an onsite wastewater pump station. They're going to pump down a force main down the access road up to Plymouth Street to a gravity connection there. The design is, makes sense in terms of they're not pumping a force main directly into the gravity sewer of the street, they're actually discharging at a sewer on their property so that it goes from a gravity, which is a, I mean, from a force main condition, which is like a hose, to just an easy gravity connection so that there's no issues with the connection to the system. But what we would like to see is, here's the wastewater we're generating, here's what we expect to be the peak flows, here's what we expect the system to be able to withstand, and here's the net impact on the system. Frequently, what you'll have is you'll have systems that have no technical reason why there's a problem, but because there might be an inflow and infiltration issue downstream from here, there might just be a problem that needs to get addressed, and we can't be seen as adding new flow to that existing problem. Hopefully, it's just a few calculations and a quick check-in with the DPW, but it'd be nice to have it as part of the record. One other comment we had, and it's in our letter, is they have a pump station, so because the site's low relative to Plymouth Street, all the wastewater comes out of the two buildings, gets taken to a pump station, pumped from that point through a force main that runs the full length of the drive up to Plymouth Street. They have that pump station shown in the middle of the access road. So it's, you know, it's not an ideal location. There are other locations available to it, I don't think it's a problem, just, we'd like to go on record saying that's not the best location for it. So typically, pump stations have controls, they have alarms, they have audible and visual alarms, so, you know, better to have it off in some area where if something does happen, you don't have to shut down the road to fix it. We also took at lighting plans, a look at lighting plans, they were nice enough to provide that. Certainly, the fixtures looked appropriate and well-thought. One thing we did notice is that their photometric plan, which shows light levels across the site, stops at the property line. Typically, our concern is exactly there, is that we want to know what's going on outside the property line. Ideally, if you're not at zero at the property line, which is typically the requirement in most towns, you're at zero relatively close. So we'd usually like to see that photometric plan extend all the way out to where it shows zero impact on the abutting property. And then probably, this is not really a photometric issue, but it is a lighting issue. We would like to see if there's any plan for screening of the houses on Plymouth Street because as they turn it, as this new traffic turns into the access road, the headlights are going to now sweep across those homes. So typically, what would happen is there's some planting or some wall or something to mitigate that, and those homes are pretty close to the driveway, so it'd be nice to see what they've got there. Not a whole lot of space there to do things, so I think we're going to need to kind of take a look at that. I'm going to wait, I'm going to hold off on traffic till the end. So wetlands, we looked at that as well. Certainly, everything that they've delineated looks appropriate, given what we've seen on online resources. We were a little unsure as to whether that line has been approved by the Conservation Commission. So the Conservation Commission has the responsibility for approving the delineation. If they haven't, then there's some potential for that line to move or change, potentially in a direction that alters their development. So perhaps we could get some clarification on whether or not the Conservation Commission has reviewed that line.
Yes.
They have?
Yeah, we have an A-RAD.
Oh, perfect. So what that is, is an A-RAD is a plan that's specifically approved by the Commission, so that that line won't change. That's great news.
What's the date of that, of the O-RAD? Just a year, is it this year?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's previous to our application.
Yeah. Delineation was in '16, so it would still be, yeah, under three years. And then, another important consideration is, because the site's greater than an acre, they'll require a federal stormwater permit, so it's called a NIPDES permit, N-P-D-E-S, that requires them to have a very detailed stormwater pollution prevention plan, really stringent measures on how they manage construction runoff and things like that. So another layer of sort of protection for the Board to consider that, as far as construction stormwater runoff and things like that, there's another process that is outside of this that fairly well guarantees that they're going to do that appropriately. Some closing general comments. Again, the site is pretty well-developed in terms of how much it's got coverage. We do have some question on how they're going to manage construction staging. So what we'd hate to see is a bunch of trucks queued up on Plymouth Street, a bunch of trucks sitting in front of people's yards, a bunch of employees parking. So really, almost 95% of the upland of the site is developed. So they should have some, a plan in place for how they're going to, you know, stage their construction, stage their materials, where their truck's going to park, where their worker's going to park. The good news is they have quite a few parking spaces on site, but it is a pretty limited area that they have to work in, particularly if they're going to establish buffer zones to wetlands and things like that. So it would be great to kind of see on paper what their thoughts are. Then, one other thing we'd probably like to see is a simple cut-fill analysis. So they're going to be doing a lot of earthwork. It'd be good to know from an impact standpoint, from the ZBA's point of view, is how much material is going to leave the site, how much material's going to have to get brought back in, just so that we can sort of assess, you know, truck traffic and things like that that might be outside the normal scope of construction. And then, I saw that you guys took a comment from the Fire Department?
Yes, the Fire Chief was here at the last meeting, and he did write that, he did talk to Glenn Lapointe Jr. about the turnaround ratios and operation areas. He had concerns about that in the last meeting. They have agreed, they've done, what exactly was done?
That turning radius now is an unobstructed turning radius.
Okay.
He has a, he's in line with the Fire Department.
Okay, and he also said the number of hydrants' locations are appropriate. So he was here at the last meeting, and he had some concerns that he brought forward.
Yep, so what we suggested in our plan is typically what an applicant will provide is what's called a fire truck plan, which shows how the fire truck can move through the site. So it sounds like the applicants talked to them, they want that big, open, turning area in the back, in the front.
Yeah, he has concerns in the beginning of...
And again, we defer completely to the Fire Chief. So as long as the Fire Chief is happy, we're certainly happy.
But you do bring up a good point about the pressures. I mean, that was not really brought up when Fire Chief, wasn't one of his concerns, but that's a good point you bring up about the water pressures.
Yeah, and it's a relatively straightforward test, it's not very expensive, and it's just great documentation to have.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea because he really didn't mention that. You know, he said about the hydrants, there are enough locations, but nothing about pressure.
Now, what is, what is shown on the plan is, what's really good is, it appears to show a looped connection. So typically, in a situation like this, you'll have a long water main that comes down off of Plymouth Street, dead ends on the site, creates some sort of, you know, maintenance and quality issues. In this case, they show a connection going back through the senior center, which really, from a water standpoint, provides a really robust...
Rotates the water through.
Yeah, exactly. It gets rid of a lot of problems and helps a lot of other, you know, it helps other sites next door, too, so it's really a net benefit. We're a little confused as to kind of how that was going to happen because there wasn't a whole lot of detail in what water system's shown on the adjacent site, or whether in fact they have the right to do that. So really, just get some clarification on that would be good. Last thing I'll touch on is, and again, all of our comments are written in the letter, traffic, so we looked at the traffic report. Certainly touches all the hotter issues. What's important to understand is, the traffic reports, the impact assessment, you know, their principal objective is to identify problems created in the network. They're not generally intended to address what I would consider like the qualitative differences that are going to result. So I wouldn't look to a traffic impact study to sort of give an opinion as to how the traffic might change in a general sense. So what the impact study does is evaluates, okay, here's the amount of traffic that can be generated from the site. It is really good background information that dictates how many vehicles come and when. They did that appropriately. And then, what they want to do is look at how that new volume impacts intersections. And what they do is what's called a level of service analysis, and look at those intersections and say, "Okay, well, is operations of these intersections going to degrade because of the new traffic volumes?" And, you know, it might not sound appropriate, but this is relatively a small project when it's considered against an intersection capacity or a roadway capacity. It might be a very large project when you look at it in the context of the neighborhood, but as far as intersections go and roadways go, not a very big net change from what's out there right now. I mean, total volume is about a 7% delta in terms of the volume on Plymouth Street. And their analysis shows that the intersections don't really degrade in level of service or don't degrade kind of a lot. So there are some changes where it goes from level of service, say, B to C, but usually that's because it just happens to tip over a threshold. The net change from one condition to the other isn't terribly high. Yeah, so mostly, our comments on the traffic study were just sort of bookkeeping issues and just kind of cleaning things up. Both the traffic study and the stormwater report were a little lean, but again, this is, you have a lot of discretion in terms of what you require for detail, so I think there was a lot of good information in both reports. But certainly, if you wanted to kind of get a little deeper on some of the information, that wouldn't be inconsistent with what's expected of others. And again, the last thing is the senior center use, they have that driveway connection, so that's kind of a game changer. If they do actually connect and have traffic going through that driveway, we'd probably need to take a look at that.
That actually was turned down, I think, by...
That's going to be what gated, just for the Fire Department access or something like that?
Yeah, I think, was that turned down, that access through the...
It was never granted, so...
That was granted.
Yeah, not direct access, I think it was just for...
Emergency access.
Just emergency access.
Yeah, so that's key, because even though it's just emergency access, with the nature of that access road, pretty narrow, certainly a good idea to have another way in there for an emergency vehicle.
Yeah.
So it actually, it makes it simpler. What we'd ask for is just a little clarity on the plans to show, okay, what kind of gate is there? Is it going to have a lock box, something like that? And that's pretty much in a nutshell. The letter has about 50, 60 comments. I don't think any of them are like massive game changers, but they do have the ability to sort of cause a little stress in certain areas that may have to, you know, move the site plan around a little bit.
Okay. Any questions?
Actually, just on the traffic one, Sean, the last one was the grading of the driveway.
Oh, right.
3% versus 2%. Does that...
Yeah, it might sound minor, but standard is 2%. And the reason it is, because as you approach an intersection, you want to be flat. And in this case, one of the things we're typically most concerned about when it comes to a new driveway like this, is how well people coming and going from that driveway can see traffic and how well traffic on the road can see them. So the traffic study comments on the, what we call site distance, intersection site distance and stopping site distance. That's the ability for cars to see each other at the intersection. When everything's a flat plain, pretty easy to look at and pretty clear that they have enough site distance. When you immediately go downhill, so if you imagine yourself turning left onto the access drive from Plymouth Street, and you go downhill immediately and there's no kind of 50-foot level landing area, you're coming up a hill right when you get to the driveway or to the roadway. So it sometimes can impact your site distances and your calculations for how far you can actually see. So when it gets below, or when the grade gets steeper than 2%, we start to think that it needs to be looked at from that perspective because it's sort of steeper than flat.
Okay, thanks.
Certainly not a huge issue, again, more of a bookkeeping exercise because I think the grade on the road is about 5%, so they can clearly increase the slope of the road a little bit to flatten that area out. Not a big concern.
Thank you.
So your thoughts on the road itself going into the project? Lot of concerns.
Yeah, way too narrow. Or shown as way too narrow.
And I was thinking the same thing on the, when I was looking at it, that I would picture a guardrail. I would definitely picture a guardrail. It would protect the residents and the entranceway.
Oh, there's no question, there's no way you can't have a guardrail on both sides because you've got five feet of grade change. So there needs to be consideration along both sides of that road, without question.
So the length, guardrails, sidewalk?
So they show a sidewalk down one side, which is four feet wide. I was a little confused because they, it appears that they call it what's called a Cape Cod berm. So that's, there's a few different versions of curb. So I think around here, where everybody knows what granite curb looks like, nice four, five inch piece of curb. knows what granite curb looks like, nice four, five-inch piece of curb, vertical, lasts forever. Or concrete, same thing, vertical curb. A lot of us have seen the little bituminous curb that ends up getting pulled up by plows and deposited on the side of the road. That's not what they propose here. They propose what's called a Cape Cod berm, which is actually 12 inches wide, and it's a more gradual surface, so it's more robust, it'll stand up to plows. But it appears to be drawn at six inches. So if you look at the plan, it's called out as Cape Cod berm, which is 12 inches wide, but it appears to be drawn at six inches. So, we wanted some clarification on...
If there is a sidewalk there or not.
Or how wide is it? If it's only three and a half feet wide, and the backside of it is a vertical wall, and it has a guardrail on it, so the guardrail has to be, if the guardrail's on the street side of the sidewalk, well, then there's not much room for the sidewalk. If it's on the backside of the sidewalk, well, how does the guardrail work with the wall, and where's the face of guardrail relative to the sidewalk?
Right.
So, really, I don't think these are unsolvable issues, but the way it's drawn doesn't leave a whole lot of flexibility for the elements that they've described within that zone.
Because we agree that there should be a sidewalk, no doubt. And also, there should be a guardrail, no doubt. On both sides.
Without question, yeah. The nice thing is, it's a fairly straight road, so there's no curves where people have a tendency to sort of maybe go off the road. But it is a pretty good slope down, so, you know, when it gets snowy and icy, you know, there's a potential for things to happen. But without question, there needs to be some sort of vehicular restraint on both sides, or else I can, you know, I guarantee you someone will end up in the wetland.
In the wetlands, correct.
Particularly with a Cape Cod berm. So, a Cape Cod berm is a lot easier to drive up and over than a, like a vertical granite curb.
Than a regular side.
Yeah. My preference would be to see a vertical curb along that edge of road, just because if you, you can imagine, if you hit a curb with your car, you're going to get pushed back into the road.
Yeah.
Takes a little bit of effort to get over that curb. Cape Cod berm, you can just drive right up on, no problem.
Okay, so those are some good concerns right there. I even was thinking about the same thing about the guardrails.
Yeah.
Because it's a long strip, it's a long road, straight, pretty much.
Yeah, and when we look at roadway design, we have what's called a clearance zone. So, it's okay if you have a wall without a guardrail on it, as long as it's a certain distance away from the traveled way. So typically, minimum distance is like six feet. And as your speed goes up, that distance gets higher and higher and higher. So I don't think there's any way they could make the case that a guardrail's not required, given how close that edge of road is to the traveled way.
And so the roadway redesign is essentially going to be the biggest X-factor in this, because it's going to impact their, how much are they going into the wetlands, and then the stormwater maintenance on the property as well?
Yeah, so I think two, if I had to kind of identify the critical components, one is how are they going to deal with stormwater? Because they have an appropriately sized system, but the question is whether that system can actually fit where it is at the size that they show, because of where groundwater is. And there aren't many other options. So, you know, sometimes when you have a site, usually there's a little nook or cranny somewhere of upland that you can figure out something.
It's all wetlands.
Here, it's, there's not much left. Now, the other important thing to consider, too, is as this roadway widens, their impacts to wetlands probably going to go up. Whether it starts to push up against sort of permitting thresholds. I don't know if that's a big deal, because this is probably what's, could be what's called a limited project, so I don't know if there's any risk, Dan, you might have looked at this, whether there's any risk of having to get a variance from DEP. I don't think that's the case, but it does sort of complicate things when you're over 5,000 square feet. Right now, they're at about 2,000, 2,100, but that can really change fast if that roadway has to widen four feet, and the four feet all goes into the wetland.
They might have an issue with the limited projects, because they have access, they have another means of access.
Case in point. So I think that roadway width is...
So they stay under 5,000.
Yeah.
That would be their goal.
Oh, sorry, yeah, so stormwater and the stormwater on the site and the roadway width. I think those are the two kind of fundamental issues. And I wouldn't sort of downplay the snow storage problem.
Right.
Because I know what's going to happen if it gets developed the way it is, the snow is going to end up in the wetland. Not, certainly not the end of the world from my perspective, but I think we have an obligation to sort of identify it as an issue and request some at least strategy for how we're going to deal with that.
And did you check on the easement there? On the project, there was some type of easement?
No, I didn't look at anything related to an easement.
What was that?
No, that's the emergency access.
No, there was an easement, was it a national grid?
I didn't see that.
Brighton, Madison.
Right, right.
Southwest corner.
I just wasn't sure if you knew there was an easement close to the project.
No.
Does that...
No, title attorneys take care of that stuff, as far as I'm concerned.
I just wondered if that's got anything to do with, you know, if you knew about it, or any concerns with it.
No, I'm happy to look into it, but usually that's, any sort of property rights issues are handled by...
Okay, I just wondered if that had any...
They're not proposing any structure on it.
Okay.
So, it would be, it's counted as part of their site, the acreage they keep. But they, I'm assuming they couldn't put a structure on it, and they haven't.
I just wanted to bring it up, because it's there, I know it's there. I wasn't sure if you knew.
Yeah. So, one more thing, Andrew, this is to your point, is maybe another primary concern is, I am a little bit anxious about the whole volume of stormwater as it comes down and through that site. So as it comes from the north and heads in a southwestern direction, if there's a real lot of water from the neighborhood and the surrounding roadways coming through there, it could make the roadway a little bit of a challenge, because you're going to have to put more penetrations through it and, you know, potentially larger structures. The other thing, too, is whether or not, there's a thing called stream crossing standards. I don't think, this is not a stream, right? An intermittent stream or a perennial stream? You know, that sometimes force these culvert crossings of roadways to be a little bit bigger than you would expect. But I would like some sort of analysis that shows how much water is coming off-site through that, because it's really like the low point through which some neighborhood runoff goes. And when you constrict it down from an open field, pretty much to a 24-inch pipe, that can have some unanticipated consequences if you don't at least quantify that flow.
Just a question, has the petitioner seen this?
Yes, tonight.
Just tonight, I just got it.
Yeah.
So, we'll take it back, engineers will look at it, discuss it, Mr. Reardon, and, you know, we'll talk presumably later about how long it's going to take us to do that, while we can come back.
Okay.
Okay, great job. I mean, very nice, pretty much hit all the issues.
Yeah, and I do reserve the right to come up with new ones if I find them.
That sounds great.
But I don't, I think most of the fundamental issues are identified, so I don't, I think it's certainly, I don't see any big critical items that can't be addressed. It's just a matter of, on the record, we want to have sure, make sure that...
Want to protect the neighborhood, the wetlands.
And when you issue a decision, that is issued on a fundamentally sound plan.
Okay. Do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Okay.
I think, as Attorney Bailey said, the ball would be in the applicant's court at this point.
Okay.
Because they have to make some changes based on these comments.
Okay. All right, so do we want to bring them up?
Yeah, I, yeah, or if you want to take any questions, yeah. I think we're good.
Sure.
Thank you. As I mentioned, we'll take the letter and have our engineers, consultants, review it. And, you know, what I'd like to talk a little bit about is, how do you want us to respond to it? There are a couple of different ways that this gets done. One way is, and I think it's the most effective, is literally the engineers get together, and they go through the letter. And, you know, everybody makes sure that they understand what your peer review consultant has mentioned. And then we respond to that by changing the plans, basically, and probably providing a letter explaining how we've changed the plans, and submitting that to you prior to the next hearing.
So, one of the things that I find very helpful is if you could address each one of his issues, so...
Like a set of MEPA comments?
Yeah, exactly. So the letter would, your response letter would have his comment, and then the response below. And then, and we could then kind of pare down the issues that way.
What we sometimes do is, as the review evolves, and the questions get answered, usually they'll come back with a response. And what we'll do is, is we'll, anything that's been sort of discussed and addressed, we'll gray out, leaving only the black ones left. And hopefully at the end, like we're midway at Timber Press, we have a 20-page document, and it was all gray, and just a couple of little black ones saying that these issues have been addressed, and you know we're done. At least from our standpoint.
Yeah, that's, so far, that's been the best way I've been able to have the board keep track of the issues.
Okay. And we have time for this?
Yes.
Everything is going to be kosher on that?
We do.
And just for clarity, because some boards feel differently about this, and I don't want to do something that's going to annoy you, we want to just make sure that you're comfortable that, you know, putting the engineers together. You know, some people just like it to be back and forth in writing. That's cumbersome, quite frankly. You know, it's a lot easier if the engineers have the plans in front of them, and Sean says, see how I, you know, he's expressed concerns about the road. See why I have concerns about the road. Okay, yep. You know, how about if we do this, how about if we do that?
Well, bottom line is, if it all works out to his concerns...
Exactly.
It will help the situation.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I think we all have concerns about that road that's going in.
Understood.
With the neighborhood, too, and the water. Like we said, it's great that's an access there, but the road is very long, and as we see right here in the whole report, we have concerns, and he's hit on a lot of the concerns the company has, so...
And we're not surprised by those either. It's, you know, it's a long road.
Yeah.
And to Dan's point, explaining technical things and working through technical things in a forum like this can be cumbersome. So, you know, there's a lot of stuff that only engineers care about.
Yeah.
But it ends up in two of us agreeing. But there is a lot of discussion and fundamental ways of analyzing things that really isn't kind of anything fun anybody's going to listen to.
Well, I'm glad you're working for us, and brought all these issues up to par. I mean, we care about, we care about the stormwater, we care about the road, care about the neighborhood. We understand now why it's being built where it is. It was explained in the last meeting. And why the road's going there, that was explained, too. And this is the project we have in hand, and we want to make sure we get it proper. So, what's good for the town?
From a planning perspective, it does lend itself to this kind of development, where you get a big buffer between the project and the residential butters, and similar uses around it.
But now, we understand why it's being built, because the access was not approved to go the other way. And we understand why it's being built so close to railroad tracks, because that's the uplands. Again, our concerns are what you have brought up, the wetlands, the neighborhood, the water, and the long road. It has to be guardrails, there has to be a sidewalk, there has to be those safety things put in. And it's great that you brought up both the neighborhood, the houses, having some type of buffer zone, too.
Mr. Chairman, I think that that's very important, the screening of those two houses.
Yes.
Because they're going from, you know, essentially no headlights, to, you know, 87 at night, 87 trips at night.
And every time you go by there, I mean, that road seems so small.
Yeah, that's just the peak hour.
Right.
So, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how that, would that be a situation where the applicant will propose something? Will you be, will the applicant be reaching out to those homeowners, those two homeowners, to see what they would like? Or will you be proposing something for Sean to comment on?
We need to keep the neighborhood happy.
Yeah, we understand, you know, we'll...
That is, that's very important.
We'll work cooperatively on that. That, you know, we've had internal discussions about that already.
I mean, I hope, if this project does go through, I hope the town will seriously think of putting sidewalks on that road, too, because it is a very dangerous situation. I drive by it all the time, and I can't believe that there are no sidewalks. I mean, now you're putting a road in that's accessing a building in the back, and there are no sidewalks. It's very concerning to the neighborhood, and that's something possibly the town needs to look into. Because it's, like I say, it's not very safe. Especially, we're going to have more vehicles going through there, taking that corner. There should be sidewalks on that road. And that's just my own opinion, so... So where do we go from here?
I didn't...
I've got to open up to the floor, but I just want to...
Before we do that, I actually just had a question on the planning board's recommendations. With respect to B, the funds for audit oversight, is that essentially what Tetra Tech is doing right now, or are they looking for additional...
No. I'm assuming what they mean by that is the, I'm assuming what they mean by that is the financials. So if the developer, in a 40B development, if the developer reaches a profit of over 20%, that extra, the amount over 20% comes back to the town.
Okay.
So they are only allowed to make a profit, a certain profit. And so, in the decision, so, for example, I just did a 12-house, single-family, 40B, 12 single-family homes at 40B, and the decision was, the decision was 45 pages long. So, we cover everything in the decision.
Okay.
So we will cover that. We will also cover the, we also cover the C, which is the...
99 years?
Yeah, what we do is, we do a springing restriction. So if by any chance, the original affordable restriction is somehow voided by DHCD, by anybody, then automatically the town has a restriction that kicks in.
Okay.
So...
What about A, he was asking before, what was?
Well, that's, you know, that's always a concern. The concern is that, is that the amount of waivers, that they're requesting from all local rules and regulations and local bylaws.
Right.
The way that the waivers have been listed out, you know, they've been listed out correctly, meaning that they have to ask for a waiver from each section rules, like they can't just say, "I need a waiver from the planning board rules and regulations." They have to list them all out. And that's the reason why people do 40B developments on difficult properties, because it's the only thing they can do, and they need these waivers. So, I mean, I don't think the list of waivers is unusually high. They're all pretty standard.
But I think the board, on one waiver, the fees, we weren't...
No.
No, we're not.
You're not.
Build a berm, it's no...
Yeah. No, that should not be waived. But, yeah, so I think it's, when you look at it, there's a lot of waivers, and most of the, most projects do that.
Okay. If we're all set here, I'm going to open up to the floor. If we're all set? Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to open up to the floor now, one at a time, and state your name and address. Anybody?
Hi, Obechman, 1105 O Street. Listening to your presentation, because that was really good, because we're just residents in the neighborhood, and we really don't know what's going on with this project, like the wetlands and all that. The snowplowing, because my husband and I do snowplow, that is a concern, because we have properties that we maintain that you actually lose parking spaces during the winter, because you have nowhere to put the snow. You have, you know, really typical 12, 24 inches of snow that we usually get, we have, you know, a pretty good winter. You're losing space, and I believe this project's already short parking spaces. Been allotted for the, you know, it's not going to be in there, so I guess that would be a concern. I don't know if you've looked at that or not.
Yeah, so we did look at parking, and first things first, you as residents know more than I do. You live here, you're experienced like here every day, so there are things that you're going to know, but I'm never going to see from looking at plans or walking in the neighborhood. So, you should feel, if there's any issues at all, or any concerns, please bring them up, because there may be a scientific reason or any reason why they exist, and that's what we can address. But certainly don't feel that if you have a concern, that it's something...
Yeah, I mean, there is a lot of wetlands, and the way that the project's laid out looks very, very good, but the roadway's always been a concern of all of us, because it does... it doesn't seem like it's gonna be wide enough to put, you know, the guardrails and like the walls or anything. It is pretty wet back there. I mean, I walked, I bought, so I'd take my dog and we'd go or we did before it was cleared to where it is now. It used to be like an old nursery.
Right.
So there was areas that were very, very wet, almost like little ponds here and there that are gone now, but, um...
So, so I do think snow removal's gonna be an issue and, and the fail-safe provision is, is they just, they use a loader, pick it up and haul it up?
With all that salt and treatment and stuff like that.
I mean, no, no salt area, correct?
Yeah. It has? It is in a zone too, so again, a little, little bit higher threshold for stormwater treatment and...
Yeah, cause the strip on Summer Street that kind of abuts it, it's no salt area, that whole area. So you maybe once in a while you gotta kind of be careful because all the sand is treated with salt too usually, so...
And, and really there, it's, it's because there aren't any other options. So, so even a, a site that didn't have the long road, access road with wetlands on both sides, we would have the same comments because the site itself pretty much develops all the upland. Um, and you don't have an open detention basin, so sometimes you can put stone detention basins and things like that.
Yeah, yeah.
In this case, the, the stormwater treatment is underground, so there's no storage on top of that. Um, in this case, you've got a long roadway that you have to find a place for that snow too.
And you push, you push more into snow and it becomes, you know, it just stacks up upon each other and goes onto the side of the road and you're trying to widen the road and, and then now you want to the sidewalks.
Yeah.
And you have to clear the sidewalks and usually blowing them off of it and it's a wetland area, so...
And, and I, I think that when they go to get their term of conservation commission, this is something that they're gonna have to look at too. What we don't wanna have is, is that it be a surprise at that point that, well, the, the CBA should be looking at, hey, what's the net result of that, of making sure there's a solution to that during this process so that when they get to the next step, it's not, it's not a new issue that forces them to come back and change things and come back to this.
And the other, the other second thing that you had mentioned too about the, um, the location of the, the pump station that actually pushes, cause I have it, come off the road, so I have one of those on mine probably that pushes, you know, pushes it out.
Yeah.
So that would be, you know, having it on the road with a lot of water and in the area, I'm not sure. Cause groundwater does get into that because we've had our alarm go off, go off because it just goes so fast that the pump can't keep up with the water level.
Yeah.
Sometimes the sensors get tangled up because if you get an influx of two or three inches of rain, all of a sudden it does seep in the top somehow, even though it's sealed concrete. It just, it happens. So in a big project like this, when you've got all this water, twenty-five thousand gallons, per se, coming in, that's gonna be going out as well.
One of the things we ask for is a detail of, of, of the pump station that they're contemplating. The nice thing is it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good-sized pump station, you know, with a lot of flow. You know, some of the challenges with a residential system is very variable flow, it's kind of small, so it's really sensitive to getting stuff stuck in and things like that.
Yeah, yeah.
With the size of the system that they're gonna have here, it's gonna have really, it's got bigger pumps, it's gonna have, you know, bigger capacity, so a lot more flexibility.
So just location that you've had an issue with?
Location because you need a, you need an alarm, you need controls, you need a way to access it. If it does have a problem, you don't wanna have to shut down the access road to, to do it. It's not a, I don't think it's a heavy lift to show in a different location or a better location, um, just it, it just needs to be thought through.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else?
There is an awful lot of wetlands.
I'm sorry, you're, you're...
I'm sorry, Karen, all of them, thirty-seven Columbus Street. I've got five acres that goes horizontal in the back to give and there are streams and there are, because I've walked through there. My concern is to weapons. And if you walk down that big long road, it goes downhill and then it lappes down and then it goes back up and it's all ferns. I have seen lady slippers down there and there's also a lot of, I've seen a lot of black and yellow salamanders and about that. So that's gonna be taken into consideration and I'm glad you said it's an assault zone. But the other thing too is if you're gonna have a hundred and forty-four apartments down there, there's gonna be two hundred and eight-inch cars coming probably every single solitary day, in and out. So when you say that the level of service at the intersections is sufficient, I don't know how that could be.
Yes, we actually think there's, Dan, you can, there's like six hundred cars a day or seven? So it's, 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 the key things are the peak hour. So intersections all function fine at two o'clock in the morning, right? But, but they call it the peak hour, the peak morning hour and the peak evening hour. That's when they're asked to analyze the net result of the project on these intersections. Um, and it's pretty, it's a pretty well-developed science. So both the way you estimate how many cars come to and from the development, what, the Institute of Traffic Engineers has a huge database of similar developments and they plot all these developments on a curve and they, they generate curves to help you forecast how many trips come from these, these developments. So as far as the science is concerned, it's, it's a really good developed, well, well-thought science. Um, the work that the applicant did, it, it was close enough to standard. We had asked them to fix a few things, but we feel comfortable that their conclusions are still, are, are pretty sound. Um, and we don't, we wouldn't expect big changes, um, based on these volumes. So I think it's more of an issue of, of, less of a capacity issue, more of a change in character issue, which the traffic studies don't, don't even consider. They, they look at what's the crash history? What's the metrics of these different intersections? What's the function of these intersections and how is that gonna change? But it doesn't, it, it doesn't speak to the qualitative changes that are, that are really the subject of this forum. So, you know, to the extent that you guys have experiences, share them, but from the technical side of things, I don't wanna get people's hopes up that there's gonna be this sort of issue that we're gonna find that says an intersection fails or some drastic change is gonna happen. I wanna be clear, it's not likely, given the size of even a hundred and forty-four units, it's not a huge project in the sphere of analyzing intersections and analyzing roadways. Um, you know, if this were a thousand units, certainly, uh, but in this case, I think it's more a question of the kind of the qualitative changes that we just should, we should be focusing on.
So, so it's not in the scope of, um, putting streetlights up? Signal lights?
Signals? No. No, and, and signals are controlled by a whole nother thing, which is, um, you can't just get a signal because you want a signal.
Traffic lights.
Yeah, there's, there's things called signal warrants. So there's, there's a whole analysis that, that needs to be done to support whether a, a particular intersection warrants a traffic signal. And, and they're pretty, you know, they're pretty high standards. So you have to have a certain volume, you have to have a certain number of, of accidents or a series of, I think there's eight, um, but you have to meet at least three of them in order to warrant a traffic signal.
A threshold. Okay, I just wanted to remember that. Uh, anything else? Were you done ma'am? I'm sorry. Are you done?
Oh, yeah. I know, I've got, I could go on forever.
Oh, one quick thing. So as far as wetlands go, um, the fortunate thing about forty-B processes is they, the applicants get no relief with regard to wetlands because the conservation commission implements a state process. So, so they're gonna have to comply with everything they normally would have to comply with.
Will the federal protection agencies be involved here?
Well, um, oh, oh, not, not personally. Um, they, they do have a, a responsibility to get a permit from the EPA. It, it's a general permit, so it's not a question of where they file an application, the EPA reviews it and issues conditions. There's a general permit for their type of activities that they're gonna have to comply with. So that's really the only EPA involvement we would expect.
Okay. All set?
Linda Hope and I were at one thousand ninth Columbus on, on the end of the Raph driveway. My question was on the guardrails, what type of guardrails are you planning on using?
So I think their, their detail currently shows was a timber guardrail. So it's a, a beefy wood plank guardrail. Looks nice, um, but in this application, you know, a timber guardrail works when you have land on both sides to, to hold it in place. Um, in this case, there's no land on either side to hold it in place. So, um, we don't know what their guardrail solution is right now. What, what they show won't work on the plan that they have it drawn, so we need a little bit more information on that.
And the lighting that's going on along the road, how close are, are the lights gonna be to our homes?
I don't think there's any lighting shown off on the, on the access road.
Oh, really? So they're just gonna be driving and go down?
I think that needs to be answered in the context of kind of the widening and the overall suitability of the road. So we, we would sort of evolve to that question. As soon as there's a road widening, have to hold it, the light, we'll probably have that conversation.
Anything else? You all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Um, anybody else? Let's go to the front row. Go ahead, sir.
Larry Cook, one Grand Street. This is gonna be a nightmare and I have no doubt this is gonna pass just by looking who's behind it. But I would not be able to look myself in the mirror if I didn't come up and speak against it. Just, traffic is just getting glossed over, you know, with your curves and studies. Let them come down my house and try and get out of my street now! You know, it's a joke! Everything gets passed, nothing gets refused. I sit at the end of my street for ten minutes trying to get up. You know? I've lived in my house for over fifty years and I've watched the south end of this town go from a wonderful place to raise a family to a mess. It's disgusting, it's overbuilt and it just keeps getting overbuilt. And that's all I have to say and I'm gonna leave because I know you people are gonna pass it.
Not tonight.
That's all we do.
Not tonight, sir. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, um, I'm Polly Reeves, I live at ten nineteen Columbus Street, uh, right on the other side of, uh, Linda, the road. And, um, like you guys had said that you would talk to the neighbors and things like that about, you know, what you potentially do to kind of, yeah, just the light screening and all that kinda stuff, but to kind of make it, well, not fair, but, you know, um, I'm just wondering what are like other ideas that you would offer away to Kevin to kind of, this, or the neighborhood? Is that, is that...
Well, I think you're concerned about the lighting itself. I think you had mentioned the, how are we gonna light up the front? Where the street starts and again, in this study, uh, they'll, they'll be talking about the effects of, uh, the lighting on the neighborhood and how to light up the front of, uh, the entranceway.
Right, so what we would expect them to do is to come back with, with a plan that speaks to those issues. So right now, the plan doesn't address them at all. So we don't really have anything to react to. So, so what we did look at is, is I looked at the air and saw where the houses were, saw the two houses, well, actually the two houses aren't even on the air. You didn't see, I didn't see a house directly across the intersection, so is, are you on the opposite side of the street?
There is one, there is one across the street though.
I'm next, I'm right next to the room.
Okay. So, so what we'd ask them to do is look at the, the houses in proximity to the, to the, to the driveway and consider all of them. It's, it's not a heavy lift to, to plant a few trees, to put a few fences up. I mean, this is a, this is a good-sized project, they should have some capacity to, to make things a little bit easier for...
I guess that was my question, like what are, what are the options, like what are the options that you...
It's almost exclusively fencing and trees or bushes.
Fencing and trees.
I think they do a nice job if they're, if they're done well.
I mean, Richard, Richard mentioned, um, like sidewalk, like because the sidewalk stops at the house, the two houses, their houses and then the driveway, the sidewalk on Columbus Street has always stopped on the house before because it wasn't actually developed really after that. There was the old piggy house which they took, built the houses. So I don't know, my parents did some work over in Rockton and they require if you're building a house on, on a separate lot, you have to extend the sidewalk, like they never redo the whole sidewalk on the backside of the project. Now, I don't, with different, to towns, a different, different thing. But I mean, you're talking to the...
To the entranceway.
Maybe sidewalk up to nowhere. There's, it's going out to the street like it is right now. There's no, I'm surprised it wasn't extended in front of those two houses at least that they built. Nothing was ever done there.
Nothing there.
We didn't even speak to this, but I, I've seen forty-B projects that have been asked to do a whole lot more. So I think it, it's part of the discussion.
It's not that small of, you know, of a stretch.
Some should be addressed. I mean, um, the street, it needs work.
I've been trying like to get streetlights down, like the power lines and I got the deer signs put up, somebody stole one, deer crossing, they stole one on the other side, they pulled him right out, you know, the DBW is nice enough to put them up because every year there's at least one or two deer hit and this, it's very dangerous, it's very dark. So those power line areas where they're putting the, this, this, this complex, there's a lot of, a lot of wildlife and there's always like, I see the cops up front like, oh, something got hit again, you know, there's always, cause it's so dark.
I'm telling you, one thing that we didn't identify that we probably should have, um, because the, the road's gonna change how animals move, so...
It's going to be twenty-two football fields, it's clear it's back there. Seventeen points eight acres, these twenty-two football fields.
The whole thing isn't developed...
Not the whole thing.
There's fourteen acres of wetlands.
Fourteen, yeah, fourteen.
So there's fourteen acres of wetlands that they won't, that they won't...
Probably a little less than that, but because we don't have a plan of the entire land system, but it, the math seemed a little bit off.
Oh, it did?
Yeah. I think, cause I think there's more than three acres of, of...
I mean, this, this site, like I said, used to be part of a, an orchard, of, of, uh, the Wyman Nursery. So there was a lot of just plants, crab apple trees and a lot of deer that used to be in that area and they come through my property and they probably come, you know, and they cut across and I go, please, and I scare them to go back, but don't go near fifty-eight, please.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, that's getting big because of the projects across the street, the project, you know, on Felstra right down the street at fifty-eight, that whole other development that just went in. So that, I don't know if you took into that effect, there's a whole other, you know, more traffic that's happening on there. Yeah, custom homes, I mean, these huge houses that, that are right in our neighborhood as well that are adding to traffic and taking away wildlife space.
The way we typically look at these, we, we try to consider that in the, kind of the, the overall kind of decision-making and, and viewpoint, but when it comes down to this project, we have to focus on what their impacts are and what their responsibilities to mitigate are. Unfortunately, can't kind of sort of ask them to fix things that aren't their, their problem.
But, but you do have to remember one thing, you, you're, you're taking an area and making it a road, coming out to another road.
Yeah.
And you have two houses right there. There has to be some type of level there. You really need to make it better than it is right now for an entranceway. And you need to take care of the neighborhood. You can't just, I, I love this, this is great. And I, you know, there's a lot of stuff in here and, and you mentioned a lot of other stuff too. Um, and I do apologize for the gentleman, he should've been yelling at me, not at you. I do apologize.
Okay.
Sean.
And he lives off of one twenty-three, okay? He's not even, he lives off of one twenty-three, I just see, he's on Grant Street.
I couldn't find his street.
He lives up near the Grove, actually.
Oh, okay.
He's not in our direct neighborhood.
Yeah.
Well, I do apologize, I should have, I should have told him to yell at me, because he shouldn't have yelled at you. Um, look, continue, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I mean, I'm, I'm definitely not against the project. I mean, you guys have a right to do what you want and land and stuff. And I'm not against it. I mean, I just think there's some things that need to be tweaked and, you know, the whole thing with affordable and the amount of units and all of that is just, that comes out weird. But I'm just, you know, concerned with just the physical layout and concerns with the roadways and, and the safety and the lighting and the headlights going, maybe it isn't, windows and, you know, that kind of stuff, I think can be worked on.
My experience, the problems, identifying problems now are easier things. The problem will come later when, when-
Oh, we didn't think of that. Oh, no, I forgot about that, yeah.
To, to the, to the developers. It's hard to change things when you're that far down the town. So what we say is, let's try to get them all out now, get them all addressed the best we can and hopefully there's no surprises later. What, what I would say is on the sidewalk issue, sometimes sidewalks are a great idea, but sometimes there are limits within the available right-of-way width, that there's not enough roadway room owned by the town to, to put a sidewalk.
Oh, there is, oh, no, there is, there definitely is. They made us move our rocks off of their area where we had, so people wouldn't come down the power lines and just dump stuff that they used to. So we, my husband has these huge rollers and DBW said, you know, Rick, do you mind just moving them back like two feet? Because they're in the, they're actually in the technical roadway. So there's plenty of room to do that.
Just a question on the screening for the neighbors. Is that something you folks are going to talk to the neighbors directly about?
Absolutely.
Okay. That would be a good thing.
Okay, the, the way we got to look at it, you know, you're building the road there. The, the proposal is to build a road there. So the neighborhood, got to take care of the neighborhood. Got to take care of the, the people with their houses there and their property values and, and the safety of getting in and out of there. Uh, that's, yeah, because you are building the road. So, um, we love, the study's excellent, like I mentioned again. Uh, are there any other questions? Anybody? Sir?
Dr. Eric Schamark, I just want to make one comment on the planning board. The, the audit is done by Miss Housing, it's a cost certification process that's, that's required. So that's, as well as the regulatory agreement, which we can also sign, I think the council said that we can sign with the town. So, um, those areas really definitely are fast.
Okay. Anybody else? Ma'am?
As a senior, Ann Riley, 262 Adams Street. I know that the neighbors have just concerns and I know that the wonderful family that is developing this project, but I do also know that the seniors in town are looking for more senior housing, so I do hope that you'll take that into consideration also.
I understand, I'm the same as you, Ann, but that, that, that it's not affordable for the seniors in this town. The pricing, no, they're not. There's thirty-five units that are going to be affordable that aren't even affordable. The senior's speaking to the senior director and the senior citizens out of the senior center. It's not affordable, they're just going to stay in houses.
But the seniors are looking for senior housing.
There's not senior housing. There really isn't.
The seniors are looking for housing.
Of course they are. It would have been nice if it was, if they worked with local, like if you work with the town in the state and actually built senior housing or something. So little units or even just a fifty-five and older park where you can collect rent and you can do the single families, these two bedrooms, like a fifty-five and old like they have over in Rockland, they've built a couple, we don't really have anything in Abington, not trailers, but I mean, like nice-
Leisure woods.
Like a leisure woods, like a place that seniors could actually afford to sell their house and come in and, but this isn't how this is set up. This is only going to be a minimum amount that's affordable housing and it's really not, I mean, they're saying fifty-five and older, which I think it should be sixty-four, it should be-
It's actually sixty-two now.
Is it sixty-two now?
And it's just, I'm just worried about like having it become a big, huge project because if you can't get seniors in there, people that can afford those rents, and then you have to go up to the state, and then it turns into a different kind of a project like on Forsyth Drive. It's, it's those luxury apartments, which were supposed to be condos, that switched because of the market. The police are there all the time, you can check the police reports. Some that live there, they got their door kicked in front of the police because they thought that the house that was dealing drugs, it was the apartment next door. So all these other people came in that aren't residents of the town that were just looking for a place for the seniors.
But I can tell you that there are many seniors that want to downsize-
Of course.
-that are looking for apartments. So whatever you got, twelve thousand dollars. Not necessarily affordable.
Okay. Um, I do agree with you though. I do agree that the town should work on more projects.
We, we definitely need, there is definitely a need, this town for seniors. I mean, they've, they've pushed through the schools, they've done everything. We need to take care of our seniors.
It is amazing, we do have a lot of town buildings, schools that are closed now that probably would make great projects for the, for the, for the elderly, for seniors. Um, but this is the project we have in front of us and I, I understand exactly what everyone's saying here, um, but this is the project we have in front of us, so. Um, anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close to the floor, going to bring back to the board. Um, where did we go from here?
Um, I think we asked the applicant how much time he needs.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Four weeks.
Okay, so why don't we, can we schedule a meeting the first week of January? So you get the information to Sean in four weeks, he then has the four weeks to review it?
That's starting to stretch it out.
Well, we have until March.
And may I ask, are, are we going to follow your suggestion where they, they, you know, reproduce your comment and then put an answer to it? Nice?
I'm not, I'm not sure on the schedule. I think it might be January. Yeah. But, um-
I have it written down.
That we extended initially.
Right.
Just for some days. Um, yeah, but the assumption is that the four weeks, you're, you're working through a lot of decisions. Yeah, exactly. We're working more, and then come back to the, to the board and present those findings at that point.
Yeah, what we'll need is at least a week to, to just confirm everything is as expected. Because usually what happens is we'll, we'll work together, but at some point, the engineer has to just go back and do his job and then, and then we come back and usually there's a few things that sort of got lost in translation and we just got to document them and then clean them up and then work. But we're, we're going to need some time to react to the actual submitted document in a, in a normal way, part of the record.
It's always a good idea to come back monthly at least, even if it's just a quick check-in. Because four weeks would take us to November twenty-ninth. You can push a week further, but Thanksgiving, you know, put into the second week of December, that gives even five weeks. But go, I think going to, to January, I don't, I don't know how much is going to happen between the second week of December and the fourth week of- Well, yes, it's a practical matter. Yeah, those last two weeks of December are-
Are dead issue.
Not terribly productive.
And Thanksgiving week is, is not productive. But I mean, is it feasible that you're going to be able to respond to each one of the points, send it back to the engineers to review, and they can comment on it with you, work on it, and then come back to us within a period of four weeks? That seems a very small time, to be honest. And you're also talking about the engineers talking together, right? Where they actually get the answers down so that when you come to us, it's a reasonably polished version? Four weeks seems a rather short period.
Clarifications. Usually what happens is they come back faster, but everything is caught.
Right, right, yes.
What do you, what do you think is a reasonable amount of time, Sean?
I think four weeks is a good time to turn, to turn something around, a, a quality product. I think two weeks is a little bit short. Four weeks give them a lot of time to sort of, in us, to work through the issues. What I don't want to do is, I, I won't issue a comment letter on a document that's not submitted to you. So the process for us is, it needs to be submitted to the board as part of the record before we'll issue comments on it. So hopefully at the, at the four-week period, they've got everything addressed and we've agreed on everything and they do everything perfectly, and then it's just, yep, they've addressed everything. But there, there, there won't be a situation where we come in and say, we've done this together. They're going to have to submit something and we'll take it at least a week to make sure we double-check everything and just make sure everything's as represented. And invariably, there's a couple outstanding issues that are maybe minor, that you guys can address in a decision. And that's usually how it's, it's handled, is if you feel like the issue is, is suitable to address in the actual decision, then we don't have to have any more technical discussion.
So you're talking two consecutive meetings then, where they present their response and then, or is it that just internally, that it gets presented to us?
No, typically what we can see is, is ahead of the hearing.
Okay.
Maybe a week ahead of the hearing, they'll submit something to the board.
Okay, okay.
Then we review that in the hopes that prior to the hearing, we can issue a comment letter that is, everything's been addressed. Or it hasn't been addressed, but if you condition the decision in this way, it, it should be okay.
So what about going between?
That's just what we were looking for.
December sixth or December thirteenth?
December sixth.
December thirteenth is our regular meeting.
Right, so.
How are we looking for the agenda for that? Is it, could we incorporate it into our meeting?
I don't think we should mix the two together.
Yeah, I agree.
What about having simply a status hearing before January and then the actual hearing as you suggested in January? Would that help?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear-
What about having a status hearing within, between now and January? And then the actual, you know, hearing we have, the council suggested in January? That, that gives you, you know, um, your monthly meeting.
I mean, I, that's fine with me because my hope would be that, you know, let's say it's December sixth, we will have been able to come to an agreement on the issues that Tetra Tech has raised, you know, and have revised plans. Um, and, you know, anything that is not resolved, we can try and get resolved that night.
Um, I, that, Amy, I, I just want to get your input.
So first of all, the application was filed September nineteenth. That's the, or is that just a letter that you had sent? But it's the application, it's what, it's, the ray line says application of Abington Investments for a Comprehensive Permit. So September nineteenth, a hundred and eighty days is March eighteen.
I'll have to go back and check.
Okay. Because you're making me think I'm crazy, but I'm not.
I, I was thinking it was one, it was a hundred and twenty and extended.
A hundred and eighty days and then forty days for a decision.
Yeah, it was a hundred and eighty.
It's a hundred and eighty days, definitely.
Okay.
So it's, um, so we have until March to, to make a decision. I think Dennis, Dennis has a, a good idea, perhaps on your, at your December thirteenth meeting, the last item could be a quick status of the 40B revisions.
And will you be there?
Something like that. I can, I can be, I'm sure.
Okay.
But, um, and then dedicate a meeting in January-
Okay.
-to, early January and coming up with everything. I do agree, I do agree with the applicant that, um, most likely they'll come back with, with quite a few things fixed and that Sean's happy with, that the board's happy with. Um, but we will need a meeting in early January to be able to go over the things that they can't fix.
Okay.
Or they're not going to fix to the satisfaction of either Sean or yourself. So, um, you know, I think at, in, at December thirteenth, we could get possibly the list of issues with the responses.
How does that look?
And then anything that's not resolved by then, can, you would still have time to resolve it before the first, beginning weeks of January. Does that sound okay?
We'll make it work.
So it's either a special meeting December sixth-
Then you don't have to have a special meeting in December.
I, I do worry about it because I think we have a full agenda that night too, so.
All right, so then do it on the sixth, if you want to do a check-in on the sixth. Or-
Okay. All right, I, I'll do it to the board. Is that okay with you guys or?
Sure.
The sixth?
Yeah, that's fine.
And it probably won't be a long meeting anyway, right?
It should be.
Okay. So, um, that way there we can hit on it. I just don't want to mix our meetings together because our, our scheduled meeting, we're not sure how much we have on it. We already know we have four things. They could add on, pile on, so.
Twelve, March twelve.
Could make for a real long night, so.
And I have it on my calendar for March twelfth.
All right, so we're in agreement that, let's write this down, um-
Also make a motion to continue the hearing until, um, December sixth?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And you're satisfied with that?
I'm with you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And then do you let the public know that-
We will not be notifying you, so, uh, seven, again, okay?
It's not a public hearing, that, that's just going to report.
Um, if they want to come though, I mean, it's, um, it's, it's open to the public,